Okay, we'll call me in order. What, what's your position, please?
I call my patients to the requirement of the United States Senator. And through the Republic, Republicans, or nation under your honor and in this cell with the word received and just as you round.
Okay. I'm going to do the roll call, please.
President Don.
Here.
Vice President Everard.
Here.
Treasurer Gaten. Secretary Chris.
Here.
Trustee Thomas.
Here.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Present.
And trustee Wasor.
Here. Okay, Linda, will you?
You sure will.
Thank you.
Goal number six, to foster conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us regardless of the basis of our interest in nature, to develop a greater awareness of all and responsibility for the total community of life. Conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then act on that information. The conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. Role number one, to preserve natural plants, native plants and animals, geological features, and natural ecosystems that are threatened or endangered in McHenry County, and to reclaim such ecosystems that have been degraded for the benefit of present and future generations and for their own sake.
Great, thank you. And by point oh, Lloyd, will you take that point?
I'd be happy to. We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully developed cities and towns, a strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number eight, we will build strong, resilient woodlands, prairies, and wetlands while striving to foster a deep sense of place.
I think that very, thank you. We'll add to six point zero. We're going to adapt the consent agenda except for we're going to take twelve point five and twelve point six out. So someone want to entertain with a motion? So.
Second.
Second. Um.
Roll call. We get to do the roll call.
Let's do the roll call in a minute.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Wasor.
Yes.
And President Don.
Yes.
And Secretary Chris.
Yes. Okay, move on to seven point one. It should be our swearing in ceremony for chief. Sergeant Wolf, I guess is going to do the swearing in.
And just a little bit of a background.
Please.
So this is a new process and a new tradition and hopefully one of them don't have to have too often with the chief of police. But normally in the forums, whether it be in the municipality or the county, there's a formal process of swearing in the chief of police to show their recognition and so Sergeant Wolf has the honor this evening to swear in.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Okay, so I have the official Otha office and Ryan, if you repeat after me, can you raise your right hand? I, Ryan Stewart, having been appointed as the chief of police.
I, Ryan Stewart, having been appointed as the chief of police.
For the McHenry County Conservation District.
For the McHenry County Conservation District.
In the county of McHenry, aforesaid.
In the county of McHenry, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of chief of police to the best of my ability.
Of the duties of the office of chief of police to the best of my ability.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Thanks, thanks for letting us do this. I told you it was going to be short and sweet. This is something we usually do very informally. It's a big deal to us. We take it very seriously, obviously. I wanted to start this as the new chief. I was going to swear in our new officer. We're probably going to be doing that in March, but they thought they would catch up and have me do it as well. And next month, we're going to have Sergeant Xavier swear in, so.
Good.
First and foremost, I want to thank my family for being here. I think it's awesome you guys came out. My team, thank you guys so much. It means a lot. And Sheriff, thanks for coming and taking the time to come out. If we could take a couple of quick pictures and then we'll be.
Absolutely.
And the sheriff, Ryan and I were all in staff and command class together, so it's kind of cool to see them go from their positions to sheriff and chief. That's pretty, pretty close.
I'm still sorry to find out.
So nice to meet you. You'll figure it out.
I can see it. We'll see. I'm happy.
Yeah. Dude. Ryan, my love.
Ask your own people about, you know.
I'm glad you're out of the way. I don't want to just pull. Well. Sergeant, next to the chief.
Oh.
Yeah. Say, get over here.
Sheriff, come up here.
I don't know.
No, no.
Man in the middle, I'm not, definitely not. No, 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 you're the man of the hour. No, no, no.
I'm not the man of the hour. Direct orders. I'll tell you all the answers for this guy. I mean.
Don't tell Joe. Again, go back to the phone.
Four one. Long time no see. All right. Well done. I didn't give my.
No, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, family.
And then we said.
Yep, yep, yep. Leave the coat on, Jerry. Yeah, stay warm in it.
Yeah. It's actually. It's something I drove like.
Yes.
Right. One of them.
Congratulations.
Probably for sure.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I just remember sometimes like it's.
Are we good on pictures?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. I'll be back. All right, we'll move on. That was good. Uh, seven point two, resolution twenty four dash zero one, recognition and honor Bob Menard's retirement. Um, there he is. Hi.
There we are.
Did, uh, when, did you want to say anything before?
No, I think I wrote the resolution, so I think I wrote it on.
We have that. I'm going to have Lloyd start out and then I'll finish up.
Sheriff, whereas McHenry County Conservation District has protected over twenty five thousand seven hundred and fifty-four acres of open space and thirty-five conservation areas, forty-five miles of regional trails that provide access to more than a hundred and fifteen miles of an integrated trail network, act to restore its lands to their ecological health, offers educational programs, and encourage appreciation of the natural environment and a fundamental understanding of the environmental ethic, and develop its lands for the safe, quiet enjoyment and interest of McHenry County residents. And whereas the district is supported in its efforts by many dedicated staff and volunteers who engage in a variety of activities, including protection of natural resources and the flora, fauna, and people who share them, site and facility maintenance, and improvement, natural area restoration, trail cleaning and monitoring, wildlife monitoring and care, environmental, historical, and cultural interpretation, educational outreach programs, and many other endeavors. And whereas Bob Menard began with the district as our volunteer coordinator in September of twenty eighteen and brought with him over twenty years of experience as a mentor, coach, and human resources project manager, in addition to serving as lieutenant commander in the United States Navy. And whereas Bob Menard masterfully understood and promoted eighteen core volunteering areas that affected every department of the district, and he is recognized for conducting hundreds of volunteer orientations, being instrumental in bringing in more than two hundred and fifty-six new volunteers to the district, and assisting with the recruitment, recognition, and retention of over four hundred and fifty volunteers. And whereas we recognize the average estimate of volunteer contributions to the district each year equates to roughly nine thousand seven hundred plus hours, representing an equivalent value of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars of holiday time. And.
Take it. Why don't you do one more?
Okay. And whereas Bob Menard was instrumental in development and organization of the online CRM database, a crucial tool for consolidating constituent record data in one place, eliminating paper files, and developing a very usable system that can be passed on seamlessly to those who handle future volunteer needs of the district.
Okay. Just collect. It's one of those.
And we're, last one.
Last one. There's one with that.
Yes.
Whereas despite setbacks due to COVID throughout the twenty twenty-one, the volunteer program didn't miss a beat as Bob handled an increased volume of volunteer inquiries resulting in sixty-nine new volunteers. Made efficient use of Zoom orientations helped create the district's first volunteer recruitment videos and helped organize a new group of DISG volunteers, added adopted trail partners and met the recruitment needs for the festival of the Sugar Maples, first sizable event of the pandemic. And whereas Bob Menard is recognized for his productive work ethic evident in the amount of work he accomplished on a part-time basis, he is applauded for professionalism, attention to detail, willingness to seek efficiencies, and ways to enhance opportunities, positive attitude, and his ability to make all volunteers from every walk of life feel welcome and appreciated. And whereas Bob Menard is also recognized as being an exceptional conduit between the district and all the volunteers for creating additional ambassadors for the district, for his genuine belief in sharing the district's mission, and for the care, personal touch, and passion for helping people, hereby is greatest attributes which cannot be measured. And whereas Bob Menard has decided to enter retirement again effective February second, I like the, again, of twenty twenty-four. So let it be resolved that the officers and the board of trustees of the McHenry County Conservation District hereby express and convey their deep and sincere gratitude and heartfelt appreciation to Bob Menard for his continued dedication to the mission of the district and the resolution incorporated to the official records of the district and witness thereof will subscribe the names and signatures. Well, congratulations and well deserved.
We need a roll call. We gotta do a roll call.
Roll call motion.
Okay, and we have to get a roll call vote. Oh, go ahead.
That's okay. I need a, a motion.
A motion to, to, uh, entertain a motion to.
Adapt the resolution.
Adapt the resolution. So we have it. Executed by Ron.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Chris.
For sure.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Wasor.
Yes.
And President Don.
Yes. Ray, we need to do this. All right.
Now, I think I mentioned on the resolution how much he gets done on a part-time basis. And you think once he announces retirement, he would like be, yeah, maybe I'll do a little of this. He's still cleaning files and cleaning up things and organizing things with the tradition, so, um, we, we are very lucky. When he came, because he knew so much about the district and then he had all this scouting background, so he had already been to our sites, he had camped on our sites. We were very fortunate and I just remember when I hired him, he had the very ease of conversation. When I do interviews, it's more like a conversation around the kitchen table. Um, and he proved that right there, but I told him when he hired, I go, whatever, just handle it. I don't want, I just, just handle it. And he has exceptionally.
And when I was interviewed, I, she asked me a little, a quick one liner, what, what is it like working with volunteers? And I said, it's like herding cats. Because they can leave and never come back. And I've been working with the scouts for almost thirty years in the area. I'm on the board for them a rock, so, so there's other things I'm still doing, so.
Oh, great. Well, thank you.
I'm thinking long shot.
All right. There, well, put that in the middle or kind of like put you in the middle and, you know, have your home net.
I see your smile. Would be featured prominently in the Wiki log.
Yeah. You want to order that picture?
Well, Wendy, you're giving me a compliment here or something. Everybody, the board, the full board, you guys want to.
Yeah, let's just get everybody.
Come on, Wendy. You do. Bobby, I can so shy. I can stand back. They're really.
I got a T-shirt on.
See? Okay. And then follow. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thanks again. We have to push that out and then we have all the.
Okay.
Thanks again.
Put on your healthy.
Yeah.
Five, fourteen, and a last. Seventeen days, just to count up.
Yeah.
Dr. Williams. Ran long, I was expecting to be home before I came.
Okay, now we'll go to seven point three. We want to introduce the new team members. We have a couple of them, I believe. One, one.
Just one tonight.
One tonight. Sean Bush, either Ranger, the Operations Department. So you want to take it over?
Yes, Sean is here tonight in the council. Oh, I saw the board. Sean Bush, he will be the district's new Region Five Ranger One. He just started a few days ago with the district. He's graduated Western Illinois University with a BS in Recreation, Park, and Tourism Administration. Uh, he brings to the district work experience as well. He was a Ranger Assistant for the Forest Reserve of Caden County and most recently Senior Ranger for the Forest Reserve of D H County. His certifications in S one ninety and S one thirty firefighting, Midwest Ecological Prescription Bird Crew member training, Chainsaw Safety Skills one oh one, Wilderness First Aid and CPR, and Leadership Academy. Along with that, related work skills that breaks the district from previous positions as a Ranger. He has snowpowling and cross-country ski trail grooming experience, maintenance of outdoor equipment, operation of ATVs, clearing saws, trimmers, moors, trucks, and trailers, wood shippers, and log splitters. Uh, he also has knowledge of plant ID as well as experience in GIS mapping. So again, welcome, Sean Bush.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thanks for having me and thanks for your time, everybody. I'm looking forward to my professional career, considering you're here.
Good. Very impressive resume.
Thank you.
You can do that.
That's just. Excited to have him on board.
Yeah, excellent. We are too. All right. Keep moving along. We're not going to break any records, John, but we're going to. We're doing.
You're doing all the good stuff, though.
Uh, seven point four. Is there anything on that? Linda?
Just an announcement and Caitlin Martinez, the boarder, I believe, I saw Caitlin online and when they were our Director of Marketing and Education, um, the state conference is next weekend. Um, the best program of the year for Illinois Parks and Recreation Association is the Find Your Wild program. So a big shout out to the entire team that was involved with this. This is fine and honor. Um, they'll be recognized statewide with that recognition.
It is, it's huge.
Way to go.
Trustee report. Any reports from any committees or anything?
The foundation meeting was canceled due to bad weather and February thirteenth. I mean, the next scheduled meeting, we're just going to roll the agenda into that.
Go ahead, Sean.
Not a report, but I'll be attending that conference next week. I'm looking forward to it.
Good. And you're going for two, the two days?
Three days.
Three days?
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, yeah.
Okay.
So I'll live there for three days.
Well, thank you for doing that. All sorts. All right, anybody else say anything? Uh, we'll go to John. You got anything to report?
You know, nothing official from the county other than what we've spoken about. I know the solar and some of the others. And other than that, my tour of the, the Bofoua herd last week, Joe, so proud to do, although I do think we need the damn trail.
There you go.
We'll have to work on that.
Yeah. Good. All right. Um, President's report, really, the only thing I can really report on is working with a landowner, um, adjacent to some of our property on getting some access and stuff like that. So I'm working with that on that. So that's about all I can report on that. Public comments? Anybody out there for public comment?
Man or beast.
I did want, I think in the future I want to maybe talk a little bit, but I want to include chief, I want to have a little section I mentioned to you, and we haven't had a chance to talk, where you can give a quick report on some activities you guys are doing, besides what we see in the Wiki. Well, but, uh, yeah, we'd like to try to do that. So we'll talk sometime.
Good.
Absolutely. Thank you. Uh, okay, consent agenda.
Okay. Twelve point one, group of minutes of previous meetings, twelve point one, eight, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, committee of the whole, twelve point one B, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, legislature meeting. Twelve point two, treasuries report, twelve point two A, acceptance of treasures report from December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three is presented. Twelve point three, second reading ordinance, number twenty-four dash ten thirty-three, and ordinance, ordinance adopting amendments to the personnel policy, procedure manual is presented. Twelve point four, second reading ordinance, number twenty-four dash ten thirty-four, and ordinance, twenty-four dash ten thirty-five, and ordinance adopting amendments to the general use ordinance as presented. So we have a new twelve point five. And in room twelve point six, I'll read, uh, twelve point seven, and I'll come back to those two.
Yeah.
Uh, twelve point seven, resolution number twenty-four dash zero three, warning contract to Ag renewal incorporated for the purchase, purchase of two new unused six-foot mechanical seat harvesters model FB two oh six, where a cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand and eight dollars. Bid number eleven twenty-three zero eight zero one. Twelve point eight, resolution twenty-four dash zero four, authorizing execution of a first, of a first amendment to the PLV dash, I don't know, send five, dash five, sorry, I forgot my glasses on, borrow. Conservation grazing lease with Joe and Beth Clark of Maringo, Illinois, which expires on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-eight. Twelve point nine, resolution twenty-four dash zero five, authorizing execution of a one-year renewal, a contract, contract with Hag Press for the printing and mailing of the district's landscapes magazine at a proposed unit cost of nine thousand one ninety-one per issue. Oh, it's nine dollars.
Nine thousand.
Nine thousand.
Per issue. One hundred and ninety-one. Per issue to all.
Yeah, twenty-four pages and twenty thousand copies. Bid number oh one, two, three, dash, no, point ten, twenty oh one. Right now.
The second for the consent. It was the second time by somebody. You were so quiet. Secretary Chris.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Wasor.
Yeah.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
President Don.
Yes. Now, now we'll go with the separate.
Now we'll go back to new twelve point five. Resolution number twenty-four dash zero two, authorizing the executive director to execute the listed agricultural leases with terms beginning March first, twenty twenty-four, and nineteen parcels containing approximately eighteen hundred eight point seven three plus or minus acres contingent upon whether the tenant has fulfilled all requirements of the current lease. Bailey Woods slash Whining Creek, B A W slash eleven twenty-five, and one hundred and nine point four plus or minus acres to James Bigelow at thirty-two point five seven percent. Bailey's Woods slash Whining Creek, B A W dash oh one dash, or yeah, forty-three point seven three plus or minus acres to Ty Nichols at fifty dollars an acre. Boone Creek, B O C eleven two three two, and B O C eleven four twenty-five dash eleven two three one at twenty, twenty-four point five plus or minus acres to Tom Burning at forty dollars an acre. Brookdale B R D slash seven oh four slash, all right, seven oh four, three hundred and twenty-nine plus or minus acres to Hart Farms LLC at forty-four point seven eight percent. Brookdale B R D, ten oh four, one hundred and thirty-nine point one plus or minus acres to Ryan Saath at forty-three points seven percent. Brookdale B R D, ten eighty-nine, forty point nine acres to Dennis Wilkning at forty-two point seven four percent. Brookdale B R D, ninety-six, ninety-eight, CRP twenty point five acres to Dennis Wilkning at thirty-five point four percent. Laisse Park G A, GLP, ten third, ten three nine seven, fifty-one plus or minus acres to Ryan Stoddy at twenty-three percent. Kishawaki Corridor, C W C, eighty-six oh four, twenty-nine point two four plus or minus acres to Anthony and Benjamin Martin at twenty-three percent. Kishawaki Corridor, K W C dash eleven five twenty-six, dash eleven five forty-eight, forty-six point seven plus or minus acres to Anthony and Benjamin Martin at twenty-three percent. Kishawaki Corridor, C W C dash ten nine three nine, one hundred and one point nine plus or minus acres to John and Ella Martin or Sue Hane at twenty-five point five four percent. Kishawaki Corridor, C W C dash twenty-one seventy, one hundred and fifty-six point four one plus or minus acres, Pierce Farms at thirty point eleven percent. Pleasant Valley, PLV dash ten seven nine one, thirty-six point six plus or minus acres to Paul and John DeShelva at forty percent. All right, about that. Pleasant Valley, PLV, eleven four nine four six nine, and dash nine seven four six, eighty-two point seven plus or minus acres to Zach Nimic, Ninzick, at forty-one percent. Pleasant Valley, PLV, one oh point seven eight, one hundred and twenty-three point five acres to Mark Efferson at thirty-nine point eight one percent. Queen Anne Prairie, Q A P, nine five zero, two hundred and forty-three point five acres plus or minus to Tom Hanson at thirty-one point two percent. Queen Anne Prairie, Q A P dash eleven nine three three, one hundred and five point six plus or minus acres to Tom Hanson at thirty-five point five percent. Queen Anne Prairie, Q A P dash eleven two six three, dash CRP sixty point two acres plus or minus to Tom Hanson at twenty-nine, twenty-five percent. And Queen Anne Prairie, Q A P dash two two six four, one hundred and forty-one point two five acres to Ryan and Josh Sass at forty-two percent.
Is this easier to read off your screen?
I think this is shorter.
I don't know. I'm supposed to read what I'm supposed to. I don't know. I'm supposed to read what I'm supposed to.
Now twelve point six.
We have a first and a second. So you move to the second on twelve point five.
Great. Twelve point five, we need a second question first.
Yes.
But what are the percentages?
That's the rate.
It's the yield and the price. Times certain percentage.
Right. So some of them you see listed in a, there's an amount and others are in a percentage. Brenna, you're on. Do you want to talk about how you negotiate the rate?
Sure. So the difference between the the dollar per acre and the percent is that the dollar per acre is for our grassland leases, which have always been. Um, just based dollar per acre, whereas our agricultural or our crop leases are. Uh, the percent is negotiated and the total rent is calculated. Um, I believe as Pat said, based on the percent, the PLC yield and the uh. The corn price. And so the percentage that's negotiated is based on multitude of factors that can include. The quality of the ground and its historic yield, the practices that are happening on that piece of land. It's the soil type, things like that.
First and second, we go to the roll call, please.
Trustee Wazorek.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas. Yes. Secretary Prince.
Yes.
And President Dom.
Yes.
Now, and if I can, just as a way to make things a little bit easier, so just leave out. If you wanted the things that are in the parentheses, which is our internal numbers in the written. Um, it's out there so everybody can see it for placeholder, but you could just. Get like Alden said, metal at ten plus minus, you know, if Alden said metal. On this one, you don't have, there's no, there's no leaseholder plotting here. It's just that, but you can, you don't need to read out the details here.
Right.
It might be harder.
Yeah.
Twelve point six, authorization for staff to begin the negotiation process. Using the current rate as established rent for the listed expiring farm program leases. Of eighteen parcels containing approximately fourteen hundred and eighty-four point six. Acres contingent upon whether the tenant is in good standing and has fulfilled all requirements of the current lease. Alden said metal. Boone Creek. Coral Woods. Placeal Park, Hallos, Kishawaki Corridor. Yeah, and then Kishawaki Corridor East. Lusky Marsh, Pleasant Valley, Rush Creek. Stickney Run. And authorization for staff to prepare specifications and secure bids for any farm leases that are not successfully negotiated.
Okay, so we have moved and we have a second. Second. Roll call, please.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Secretary Prince.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yeah.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Wazorek.
Yeah.
And President Dom.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, good. We got through that. Uh, we'll go to thirteen point one. Uh, Treasurer. Gaten, please.
So we have the. Uh, internal audit and I have here an email from Sean. And he requested three invoices be pulled. One is H six eight nine three Ralph Ham Inc. For a total of eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. The second one is S seven seven zero zero State Chemical Solutions. For a total invoice price of two fifty-one dollars and seventeen cents. And the last one is H eight four five six HR Green Development LLC. For a total price of eleven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
So yeah, a motion we.
You'll hold them and then we'll get information.
All right.
Uh, so then moving on to thirteen point one B. Uh, I will. Make a motion to approve the payment of bills as indicated in the submission of bills pending report. For the motion and, or sorry, for the month ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Sean, second.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Wazorek.
Yes.
Secretary Chris.
Yeah.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas. Yeah. President Dom.
Yes.
Fifteen point two.
Moving on to thirteen point two. Um, I make a motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-five tentative combined annual budget and appropriation ordinance. Uh, consideration of the motion to pass ordinance number two four. Dash one zero three six, an ordinance adopting the tentative combined annual budget and appropriation ordinance. For fiscal year beginning April first, twenty twenty-four and ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Great. You have a second?
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Secretary Chris.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Wazorek.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
President Dom.
Yes.
Okay. Got all that done. Thank you. Move on to fourteen point oh. The directors report.
Ladies, why do we, thanks, Jeff. Uh, great work. We did not have any casualties this weekend with the freeze. Unfortunately, we've had some years where things are outside of control during the meltdown. But again, the proactiveness of having to go through and. The diligence of being out and about, getting sites cleared and staying on top of that.
Plowing, no major problems with plowing or equipment breakdowns or anything?
Uh, no, everything went well. Uh, there was a bit called snow all been moved, you know, first part, five inches being soft and then. Freezing up and then the original six, eight inches, but the crew stayed on top of it. Uh, chasing most of the day, you know, during the snowstorm and then. Followed up with cleanup the next day with some drifting, but no, no major breakdowns and. Everything was clear, snowing trails are open, ski trails are open and. Bean groom, the sled hills open and yeah, we're open for business. So.
Good. And John buildings, everything worked, worked well?
Yeah, we got a, uh, we just, the cops were out and about. We had them go out and about. We also, a couple of staff went out yesterday just to make sure everything was okay. We did find a couple furnaces that were not doing what they should be doing. Um, got those remedied today. Uh, nice thing about having a building that has, you know, six or eight furnaces in it is that one can kind of make up for another one. Just put a box fan in somewhere and kind of move some air around immediately. So we remedied a couple of things yesterday. One minor water issue had to do with hot water, not anything to do with the breeze. So it was just an oddity. Uh, but yeah, we're, uh, we're good to go.
Good, good. Thank you.
So good news on that front. Uh, Spring Landscapes is at the fair, so. We can start counting the days to the spring in Quiddax and everything start to get warmer. So looking forward to that. Um, as well as the budget, now that it's been adapted, it'll appear in the newspaper announcing, you know, the information is available on our sites. It'll be posted to our website. We'll get a letter off to the county board chairman, uh, so that information can be disseminated. And we'll hold our public hearing, uh, in February. So we're packaging all of that. The only one conversation in a follow-up to our meeting of last week where we had the historic preservation. Conversation about the Kennedy Way Station was the timing. So we don't have the pricing yet of the proposals on what that possibly be. If we get that in, of course, we're going to come back to the board as we agreed to last week. Um, if the timing is that it would occur in this fiscal year before March thirty-first. Then we'll present to you a recommendation and make a budget align transfer. However, we're now in this place between one fiscal year to the next. And then speaking with President Dom. Um, the most probably responsive thing to do would be to place an item amending the budget. In the final budget, um, to add in a potential cost of the roof replacement. Again, if the board decides not to move forward on it, then the dollars don't need to be expended, but at least it's preserved for that. Opportunity, should that be the case. So I think it's just a timing issue and that would be my recommendation. So.
Okay, we need direction. We don't need the same.
If you guys are in concurrence, then.
Does that sound logical for everybody? Doesn't mean we're going to be doing anything.
Correct.
Uh, the, there was appropriation for that.
And there's a.
Okay, uh, we already talked about committee assignments and the reports. Uh, I guess we'll go to public comments number two.
There's still no one out there.
Okay. And that means anybody in the audits, if they have any comments or questions. We're all good. All right, and entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that a motion to adjourn.
I would move and second everybody. John?
Secretary Chris.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Wazorek.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
President Dom.
Yes.
Or adjourn.